Thank you, Mayor Trustees. Ms. Eric Gordon does send her regards and she regrets not being here tonight, but she is looking forward to, and we are looking forward to having her back to give you a little bit of a training, just a little bit more about hearing officer roles and compliance. But tonight, it's kind of a crash course in liquor. And we're going to discuss, as Ms. Garcia said, some license types and an overview of Wellington's licensing program. So as you all know, liquor is listed under Title 44 in the Colorado revised state statutes, which governs liquor licensing. And it's also governed by the liquor rules and Colorado beer and wine code. That kind of all interact together and they all regulate liquor licensing. So it's not just one law or one book that your licensees have to kind of know and understand for their license type. There are several different rules and regulation bodies that they all have to work with. All of those regulations, when your applicants come to you, those licensees should have a good understanding of what their license type is, what their license type and all those rules and regulations are required to have in order to be compliant with all of those various regulations. A lot of the different, like each different license type has a variety of requirements. Some of those requirements that might not come to mind when you think of liquor. It might be a percentage of food sales has to be a certain amount and that varies depending on license type. Sometimes a license type has a percentage that it has to be of liquor sales. Sometimes there is a requirement of type of food being provided. And those are just to name a few. So anytime an applicant comes to you, they should have all of that as an understanding for their specific license type.
So occasionally, a lot of times we'll get a licensee come in and they want to apply for a license and they are looking for legal counsel. They are asking a lot of questions like, how do I fill this out? Help me, help me understand this piece of the code. And that's not our role in local government or, or the clerk's role. They need to hire outside counsel to help them, help guide them through that process. It is not an area that we are willing to go to.
So I wanted to overview what on staff and a new application process looks like, even before it gets to you as a hearing officer, before you even hear that it might be coming to our town. When I receive a new, or when our department receives a new application, we do a thorough review of it because we don't want to send an applicant to a hearing with you. It requires a lot of posting beforehand, your time, the applicant's time. We want to make sure that we're sending through a good application that's met all those requirements before it gets to you for you to ask your questions and do a hearing with them. When I receive an application, I bring in a lot of different stakeholders. We bring in Laramie County Sheriff's Office for inspection and enforcement. They also do all of our inspections, as you know, for the liquor license diagrams. We bring in the attorney for legal review, planning and building to ensure our code and zoning compliance. We don't want to issue or bring them to a hearing where their license type might not be zoned in our town in that particular neighborhood. We bring in the fire department for fire code compliance. And we bring in finance to address any sales tax items that might need to be looked at with that particular business. My department specifically goes through a very long checklist, really reviewing each question of the application, which I know you as a hearing officers also do as well. We make sure that all of the applicable questions are answered. A lot of those checkboxes are missed. So by the time it gets to you, we want to make sure that every single checkbox is checked. A lot of times when we sit down and go through with an applicant, that print is very small. A lot of those checkboxes get missed. We verify that they have a ballot sales tax number, that it's signed, which is an easy one for applicants to miss. We also make sure that the fees are paid and that those fees are paid correctly. The Department of Revenue, as you know, sets the fee schedule. And it's a little bit tricky the way that they have it worded. So we like to make sure that the applicant has paid correctly. They haven't overpaid and they paid both us and the state. We also, when we receive a new applicant, require and work with the applicant, see their owners and managers to do an individual history report. Those items are not included in your packet because of the nature of the documents. But we do work with the owners and the managers to get their fingerprints checked. We receive the background checks and then staff reviews those to make sure that there aren't any areas of concern. And Dan will speak to kind of items of what might be a concern in those background or areas where you might be able to ask an individual particular questions about their background check. But staff does review that either with the attorney or LCSO as well, just to make sure that there aren't any items of concern for those background that might hold them up from, from proceeding. Go ahead.
And I know we're gonna, we're not really talking about the details on the, the background check just yet. But you know, those forms are complicated. And the forms that you don't see, which is the individual, the financial history requires a rather extensive dive into the individual's financial history. And it's, it's the owners, it's any partners in the business. Sometimes it involves financial history of landlords and others. I mean, there's a lot of detail in that. So I think as Patty mentioned, often people come in with these applications. Well, I'm opening a business. I can fill out the forms. We, I often will recommend they get legal counsel before they, they submit them. Mostly what I'm looking for, mostly what Hannah's looking for is completeness on it. You know, make sure that they understand what those checkbox are. Make sure they've checked all of the boxes, make sure they filled out all the forms. Not making judgment calls on those things and it's brought to the board once it's complete. And under state statute, once that application is complete, I believe the hearing has to be held within 30 days. So you know, where there's a point where we say, okay, now it's complete. But usually there's quite a bit of back and forth between Hannah's office and the applicants to get to that stage.
So part of the application that we also review is the lease or the ownership of the property. Some of the little tricky things that people might not know when they submit an application to you is that if you, they have a lease, the lease also has to state that that applicant has permission to serve alcohol on their premise. It's not just a regular lease. The landlord has to know and acknowledge that they are aware that alcohol will be served on those premise. The license also has, or the lease also has to extend for the length of that licensing period. And a lot of times with renewals, we see issues with the lease ending prior to the license renewal date. So we also have to work with the applicant to either get a letter from the landlord noting the intent to extend that lease or renew that lease as well.
This is an area where we often are working with, with the applicants. Because many entities, you know, they'll have an LLC that owns a business and then that same person might own an LLC that owns the building itself. And in that case, the applicant, the LLC that owns the, that wants a liquor license doesn't actually own the business, or I'm sorry, doesn't actually own the building. So when they check the box and they say, I own the building, well, technically the applicant doesn't own the building. We technically still need a lease, we still need permission from the landlord. And so there's some of these hoops that feel sometimes like unnecessary hoops, but they're necessary. And so we try and work with applicants as, we try and be as friendly with them as possible and explain the need for all of these things. But that, that's one area that we catch quite often. You know, once you're starting a business, you're creating all of these different legal structures and how those interplay. But that's something we find, I don't know, I'd say about half the time, there's an error with that question.
It is very frequent, for sure. One of the other areas that we get a lot of questions on is a diagram. When we get an applicant who may not have a business or a past with any liquor license, one of the first questions is, what does a diagram look like? Am I, you know, drawing it? Am I just Googling a picture? What am I doing? So one of the areas that we spend a lot of time chatting with an applicant on is what, what makes a good diagram? So we ask questions like, is it clear? Is it labeled? If you only had your diagram and you were walking around with blinders on and you could only look at your diagram, can you tell where the tables are? Can you tell where the exits are? Is the liquor storage marked? Can I find that without seeing your physical presence? Are the, the tables moving? Are they booths? If you're in a hotel and restaurant, is, if you're in a convenience store, is the alcohol in a particular section, is it marked on which aisle it is, that type of thing? The state does have requirements, as you know, for what those diagrams look like. It has to be outlined, it has to be a certain size. It needs to show the direction, that type of thing. So those are also an area where we spend a lot of time with licensees on making sure that when they've submitted that diagram to you, it's very clear. It's very, it's easy to take either you as a hearing officer or LCSO as inspection officers to go into that facility and find everything that they might have questions on just based off of the diagram. One of the other areas that we spent a lot of time on that might not necessarily be in your packet for review is the ownership information, the corporation structure, all of those documents that the entity creates based off of their business, not their liquor license. We go through and review, we make sure that it matches the requirements for that license type. And then we proceed with the hearing if that matches. If it's an entity that, trying to think of an example off the top of my head. If there's a corporation applying for a license type where it needs to be an LLC, for example, we would work with them to see if, if they need a different license type, that type of thing. Once the background check has been complete and we have all of the ownership information, then we move on to our needs and desires, which as you all have seen, kind of varies in Wellington. Most generally, an applicant will show you needs and desires by turning in a petition. Right now, the town clerk sets the boundary of a certain amount of time or a certain amount of space, excuse me. And the applicant will take that petition and gather signatures of residents within that boundary. And that is how, right now, they're showing you as a hearing officer that there's a need and a desire in, of the community in that location to serve alcohol in that specific license type. Go for it.
And with all, well, with almost everything in the liquor code and the liquor rules, it's pretty vague. There's a lot of discretion left up to the licensing body. So when the, the code says that the applicant must prove the, that there's the, the needs of the, I think it's the reasonable needs of the neighborhood and the desires of the, of the neighborhood, that's not incredibly clearly defined. So petitions are certainly one form of evidence that are used regularly. But even if you have a petition that's got five, if you had a petition that had 500 people signing it and you had other evidence on the other side, there's no number. There's, there's no like clear numbers game as you're making these sorts of decisions. But on the other hand, if they have a petition with 500 people signing it saying, yes, absolutely. And then you have in the hearing, five, five people show up adamantly opposed to it. If the board were to deny that application, weighing that 500 person petition versus five people in person, you'd have to have a pretty substantial reason for that. And, and these hearings are quasi judicial hearings. A liquor license is a property right. And so all decisions, in particular, decisions to deny based on evidence presented to you would need to be really clear. Why did that evidence equate to the needs of the neighborhood not being met? Or why did that, you know what I mean? Needs and desires is also a pretty interrelated concept. Needs is really about that, that particular kind of beverage. So if a neighborhood had, say, a number of breweries, so there was lots of beer being served, somebody could come in and say, well, I'm, I'm opening a, an establishment and also primarily liquor, not beer. Well, what you're looking at is, are the needs of the neighborhood to get liquor being met? So it's actually based on the, the beverage type. It's kind of interesting. And desires is a very vague standard. And when you're looking at desires of individuals, that can be petition testimony, it could be in-person testimony. But if somebody comes in and says, all alcohol should be banned and I don't want any alcohol anywhere around, the courts have actually said that that's not relevant. If they say that they don't want any alcohol ever. So it's, it's, it's vague. It's, it's on, it's a squishy standard. So you really need to weigh the evidence. Listen to all of the testimony, weigh all of the evidence in making those decisions. But it's, it's fun. And sometimes we don't have petitions. I don't think our code, we don't require a petition. But sometime, often that's the best sort of evidence, right? If you're looking at the desires of the neighborhood, often a petition is, is, it would be the best kind of evidence. But if somebody, an applicant just wanted to come in and have, you know, they brought 10 people with them to testify that they wanted that store there, that would also be evidence presented. So you could weigh that as you would, or as you need to do. It's a squishy standard.
Another item that happens prior to it coming to you as a board is posting. We have to publish new applications in a paper. And it's up to my office to make sure that all of those dates are met and matched prior to scheduling a hearing date with the authority. The applicant also posts a notice, those really large poster signs that says there's a hearing. It gives the public another opportunity to know that there's a hearing about what license type and the date of the hearing, so they know they can show up and speak to you at that hearing time. After, after you've reviewed and made your decision, the clerk's office also provides a preliminary findings report to the applicant. It basically goes over, we met all of these items and here's the outcome. That way they have something documented for what that outcome was. And that is required by state statute as well. Do you have anything else to add about the application process or should we move on to the role of the authority? Perfect. So segueing in then. As you know, the role of the authority or the authority is responsible for regulating the sale of alcohol beverages. But it's also your responsibility to keep in mind the safety of the community and the needs of the neighborhood, which Mr. Sapienza just spoke to. And then we have, we were going to speak about the good character definition a little bit as well.
In evaluating an applicant, one of the grounds, one of the things you should evaluate is whether the applicant has good moral character. Again, this is not defined in code, so somewhat arbitrary language. But good moral character is, evidence of good moral character, or I should say evidence against good moral character would come from the background check that's run. And so in evaluating somebody's moral character, the board is, can look into criminal history. And really that's the, the primary thing that we'll look at. But the courts have said that you need to look at the criminal history as it applies to the responsibilities of an applicant. So you're looking for crimes of moral turpitude and other things that would look toward how they would conduct their business as a liquor store owner, as a liquor licensee. An example would be if somebody had a, even a felony DUI on their license, on their record. That alone is not simple, you can't just check the box and go, oh, nope. Don't have good moral character because they have a felony on their record. Now that might be evidence of bad moral character. There could be more to it. But as you're evaluating their good moral character, you can ask questions about kind of what they've done to rehabilitate themselves and how long it had been since the offense and other things. So there's no black and white rule, but you look at the criminal history. And that's why in your packets, when there is a criminal history that is provided to you. So, but good moral character, it'd be nice if it were a little clearer, more clearly defined, but.
Just to clarify, while the background information and all that kind of proprietary information might not be provided to you in your packet, I always have it available for the authority to review in paper, in person. And we just don't put it in the packet because of the nature of, of what's included in those background checks. So we're going to hop into looking at a various license types that we might have here in Wellington. Before we do that, I wanted to define one common area of question. We do get asked quite a lot with that food requirement, what is defined as a snack and what's defined as a sandwich? Many of the license types, as we discussed, have a food element require it, requirement. And most of those in the license types are called out as snacks or sandwiches available, or snacks and sandwiches. So the light food requirement for snacks is defined and acceptable as popcorn, pretzels, nuts, chips. So think of kind of your bar food, that's okay as a snack. They don't have to have all of them. They just have to have it available. A license also doesn't have to have it out all the time. They just have to have it available. A sandwich would be something a little bit more handheld, like a hamburger, a hot dog, frozen pizza, burritos or chicken wings are also acceptable. And again, a lot of your license types don't have to have that out and served and available. They just have to have it upon request. One of my favorite stories is the nail salon that had to have sandwich as their food available and they had hot pockets in a freezer. And one time when they had to serve their hot pocket, they just went out and bought another hot pocket, one by one. And that's acceptable. Yes. Just have to make sure that expiration date doesn't pass, I guess. So some of your various license types that we have in Wellington are retail liquor store. This does sell off-premise consumption. They can offer deliveries through a state-only permit and they can also offer tastings, which we'll talk about in a second. They do have to have gross revenues from non-alcohol products and they cannot exceed 20% of the store's total annual income. And keep in mind, these are things that your applicant and you as a hearing officer kind of have to be consistently checking as an applicant comes to you. A retail liquor store cannot sell items like lottery tickets or cigarettes. They cannot.
But they can sell chewing tobacco.
Retail liquor stores cannot sell tobacco.
Yeah. Most, most liquor stores I go to in small eastern Colorado.
Do they mean retail liquor stores as in liquor stores within a grocery store or?
No, this is a retail liquor store like Cantina Liquor. And I think absolutely can sell tobacco and.
Then I will stand corrected.
It's for purposes, so a retail liquor store cannot sell more than, not, no more than 20% of its revenue can come from non-liquor items. For purposes of this calculation, it excludes lottery tickets, cigarettes, et cetera. So if, if they.
That's why your applicants are supposed to read all the rules and regulations.
Cause it's like, no, no, that's wrong.
See, I read that too. And I was like, that's weird, but that is why we have a stakeholder team. Thank you. So moving on to tavern license. And you can think of Soul Squared or Old Colorado Brewing here. They are selling for on-premise consumption and they must provide sandwiches and snacks at all time of alcohol sales. And the primary business has to be, for this license type, the sale of alcohol. So their primary business can't be serving meals. Yes, sir.
They're like on Soul Squares, they don't have sandwiches themselves, but they got the food truck, so that is okay that way.
It is food that is available.
Okay. Thank you.
The entertainment license, which we have one in Wellington, is the Wellington Manor. This license type did use to be entertainment and lodging and those two have separated. So this is somewhat of a new license type-ish and it does have specific requirements just for entertainment. They have to have on-premise consumption and they have to include, their requirement is providing the public with an opportunity that is primarily artistic, cultural or entertaining. And they also must provide sandwiches and light snacks. For your beer and wine license, Papa's Table here in town does have a beer and wine license, not a hotel and restaurant license, even though they are a hotel. So this is for sell on-premise consumption and they have sandwiches and snacks available at all times, but they don't have to offer full meals at all times. The Brew Pub is also a fairly popular license and they are licensed for retail and wholesale of malt liquors. And that manufacturer amount has a certain amount of malt liquor that they can manufacture onsite each year. And their food sales must comprise at least 15% of gross sales. And the hotel and restaurant is also another very popular liquor license because everyone wants to have a margarita with their meal. On-site consumption is available and they must regularly serve meals. And the sale of food has to be at least 25% of a hotel and restaurant's gross income. The fermented malt beverage and wine license is, these are mainly your grocery stores or your convenience stores. And they can sell fermented malt beverage and wine, but they cannot sell hard alcohol or hard liquor. They can also apply for a delivery permit through the state. And they do have to meet a 20% food requirement, even with being a convenience store or something like that. And I did also want to talk a little bit about our temporary permits. You remember that you administered, you allowed the town clerk to administratively approve temporary permits? And then these are things like tastings and our new license, which is a retail establishment permit. So tastings are very temporary in nature. Normally they last an hour or two hours. And the license that can apply for a tasting can apply for up to 25 in a year. And those would come into the clerk's office. We'd review the dates and then we would send it to the state and LCSO as well, so they know when those tastings are happening. The retail establishment permit is brand new. And we also have one that is currently licensed in Wellington. Thistle did apply for a retail establishment permit. And the retail establishment permit is not in my book. But they have specific requirements. They have to, their purpose has to be sell of goods. And they can apply for up to 15 days of a set amount of time to sell alcohol or provide alcohol. Prior to that, a retail store would have to get a actual liquor license or work with a nonprofit for a special event permit. Do you have anything to add to those license types?
That, that one's an interesting new license. It's kind of for a, that, or new, new permit that retail establishment one. It's for, you know, like Thistle. It has, doesn't normally can serve any food, doesn't normally serve any drink, but for special events and things, they can have liquor on premise. So that's new and, new and interesting world.
Kind of like a art walk deal where they have wine, something of that nature?
Kind of. I'll say kind of like that. Yes, yeah. The, the same concept. And I only hesitate because there's specific art gallery licenses and other things in the code, so, yeah.
And the other temporary permit that you all are very familiar with is a special event permit. The special event permit, you have very specific people who can apply for that. Generally it has to be a nonprofit or the funds, the funds have to go to the nonprofit. A chamber can also apply for that and government entities can also apply for the nonprofit license. As you know, they can apply for 15 days in total for that one entity who's applying. One item that most municipalities do require, and the state gives the local authorities ability to, to require this, is that your special event application, applicants must tell you where they receive the alcohol from. Generally, the entity can purchase the alcohol or they can have it donated from the wholesalers. And a lot of municipalities require those applicants to provide proof or a letter of where they're getting their alcohol from. And there's also several state licenses that the local authority doesn't have anything to do with. But they sometimes pop up and you wonder where they came from. Those might be a brewery or a winery license. The state does generally let the local authority know. And in the case of, of wineries or some meteries, the local authority will have the opportunity to not approve, but basically say that you either support or you do not support the license. However, it is up to the state to actually license that entity. There's also a state delivery permit. The applications that, or the applicants that you have, they turn in their state delivery application with their renewal permit, but it's not something that is ever approved by the local license. So you might see some of your licensees taking alcohol out and you never approved it, but that's okay. It's just through the state and the state regulates that.
The state also has distilling permits. And I mean, if you'll notice on all the, a lot of these permits, the biggest distinction between them is the kind of alcohol that can be served based on the different kind of license. And like, I think we recently had a brew pub application, or perhaps we recently had a tavern application. You know, a brewery might start out with a brewing license from the state, but then if they want to actually serve alcohol or wine as opposed to just beer, then we'd spirits or wine instead of just beer, they need, they need to apply for a whole different kind of license type. Cause a brewery license doesn't allow them to sell wine or spirits. So then they might apply for a brew pub license, which is locally, locally licensed. So the, the interplay of all of these, it's, you know, as the, as a business develops and changes, they might apply for one license at one time and then decide they want a different kind of license at another time based on what kind of alcohol can be served. And that comes back to the, what we talked about earlier, the needs of, the needs of the neighborhood. You know, as you're looking at whether a license is appropriate in a neighborhood, if there's a lot of, like I said, a lot of breweries, maybe another brewery is not necessary in that neighborhood. But if somebody comes in and says, I'm going to have a tavern where I sell spirits and wine, well, has the needs of that neighborhood for spirits and wine been met? So it's a lot of interplay between all these different license types.
On your dais in front of you, you have the special events local questionnaire. And that's something that's relatively new to the town of Wellington. It's really intended to just get a better idea of the event, provide a little bit more direction to our stakeholders and kind of ask all those questions at the time of the application, instead of receiving that application and then staff going out and, and asking all of those questions that our stakeholders find very relevant to their review of the application. Also on your dais are some potential questions for a local hearing officer to ask during a hearing. I'm happy to go through them if you all have any questions about them as well. And then if Ms. Garcia or Mrs. Sapienza have anything to add, or we're happy to answer any questions.
Sure. I think we're happy to field any questions you might have. Based on this information, you'll see that, that liquor licensing is very complex. It's not a simple one and done or. It's not a simple one and done or as simple like submitting the application and signing off on it and sending it over to the board for, um, to the liquor licensing authority for review or consideration. Um, there's a lot, there's multiple pieces and multiple stakeholders on a regular basis. And liquor law changes a lot and quickly. So it's important, Hannah was just at training last week, um, for the Clerk's Association and, and, you know, trying to stay up to date and up to speed on everything that's happening, like this new permit that Thistle got, thank goodness Hannah was aware of it, so we could, you know, provide Thistle that often, um, so they could continue, so they could provide, you know, alcohol whenever that, you know, during their sale days and things like that. So, but happy to field any questions that you might have or ideas or thoughts. I know a lot of this is, is new.
I, maybe the only question I have, uh, so is, for example, like a special event permit for, uh, Brew Fest or something like that. I think you, you mentioned that obviously they, they have to, uh, tell us upfront what type of alcohol they're selling, but you, your vendor list, I'm just curious, could change at any given time. If some, uh, say ex brewery wanted to come in, but it was past the hearing date and these, those, are they still able to add those vendors to their, I mean, I, I'm just curious, really.
Are you talking like if there's a Brew Fest?
Yeah, like if there's a Brew Fest and you've got, you know, twenty vendors come in, but then twenty first vendor wants to join in after the application's already, already been approved. Is that allowed?
Sure, and I'll let Mr. Sapiens jump in if, um, needed. Um, as far as the application itself goes, that's allowed. Um, our code and our authority does not speak to having a cutoff date when all of those items need to be final. As a hearing officer, or if it's being administratively approved, we're not looking at, um, all of those specific vendors of the event. Um, even if it's like a, a food vendor, we're not looking at A, B, and C and, um, going to, going to that event with our checklist and making sure that's all in order. That's not the role of the authority. The authority is, um, there to make sure that the event is, uh, safe and secure and meets all of the requirements. Um, and if they swap out a vendor, if they need to find a new vendor to hold their event, that would be up to the applicant.
Yeah.
Let me build off that real quick. Uh, yeah, the question is really how will you, and I think this is coming from the presentation where, uh, we talked about, you know, where they're going to get their alcohol, whether it's purchased, whether it's donated. And really the question is, how are you going to get it? And, and so they'll say, we have breweries coming in, the breweries will donate the alcohol. That, that's kind of the answer to that question. We're not looking at, you're going to have these four breweries specifically, oh, and that, that's not really the question being asked.
Yes, yes, it makes sense.
Right.
And it, just to clarify that a little bit more as well. Right now, we do not require that. The state does not require it either. It is suggested and we ask for it, but if they don't provide it, that is not a reason for denial.
Okay, okay.
And every party that does participate does have to have liability insurance. And do they present the search to you or?
That's really only a requirement for you, um, activities that take place on, on town property. So that's really a separate question than a liquor license. That's if the town is allowing, uh, uh, a nonprofit to use town property for an event, the town requires insurance, but that, that's not part of the liquor licensing.
Separate special event permit that's, that we work through, um, our, through the town.
I do have a question. So, and I'm reading through the, some of these questions, cause I do read front to back on all the applications that you send over. A lot of these questions are questions that are included when you do submit the entire packet to us. A lot of these questions are included. I see some that aren't, that could be asked, but if there is, like, if these are the recommended questions, could it not be the ones in here that are not already included in the application? Would it be easier for you to already have this, so all you do is hand over the packet that has these questions asked and answered already? Does that make that process?
I think this is, uh, I get what you're saying. Um, I think the reason she's provided this with us, uh, or to us is so, this is, this falls within the realm of questions that we can ask, right? Some things we can't ask, or some things we can't like use our emotion on when looking at these, cause it's more or less that quasi-du- traditional kind of hearing. Um, findings of fact is where it comes in, so we get, we have to be careful on kind of how we present ourselves or what we say. Is that, I mean, is that correct?
Yeah, thank you, Marsha. She, that's, that's pretty correct. Um, this is kind of meant as a starting ground for brainstorming, what other questions you can ask. Um, and I'm happy to go through and kind of fine tune and maybe take off some of the redundant questions that are already on, answered on the application. It's more of a starting place to provide a direction of questions. Some of the questions that you might not want to ask an applicant are, um, can my business or can my food truck sit out in front of your, um, of, of your business? Or when is your grand opening date? Cause I'm really curious. That's a great question for your business, but that's not relevant to their liquor license. So this is meant more of, this is the genre of questions that you can be asking.
Got it. And I think that's what I was asking is, is the, the pertinent questions that are already in the packets that we are presented with. I don't know if they need to be included in our list of questions. Um, just because they've already answered them and we have them at our disposal. So just if there's more targeted questions, I think that might be more helpful too, cause I just, I don't want the applicant to get up here and we ask them the same questions that they've probably already answered, cause they have state us as far as the town, and then they get in front of the trustees and have to answer the questions again. So I'm just trying to figure out how to limit the.
Have to ask these.
Right, right, but just, I don't want to make the mistake of asking it and then they'll be like, okay, this is like the third time someone has asked me this question.
Well, you might be surprised.
You're, you're serving as the liquor authority. It's your job to ask the questions and even if it's the tenth time it has been asked, for the record, those questions should be asked.
I, I.
Whether it's in the, whether.
Might pet you on two.
It's, it's, and sometimes the person who has filled out the application is not the person that's standing up there and talking, who is probably the one who has the ultimate authority. So to ask the question and to have the response on the record is really important.
I, I was going to say the exact same thing, and I think, uh, you know, an example of a question that I think would seem really redundant that I'm seeing on this list is, is the alcohol being served onsite or for offsite consumption? Well, it seems like a basic question because what kind of app, what kind of license are you applying for? But if, if you're, if, if the applicant is up there talking and you're, you're kind of running down, most of these are like, how is your business going to operate? And if you ask that question just for the record and, well, I, I don't really know. That's a good, you, you want to know if they know how their business is operating. So I think in some cases you may not ask that, but I, but these are things that might be relevant and yes, sometimes, sometimes you might be asking something for the third or tenth time, but for the record, to make sure that the board, make sure that the liquor license authority is competent, that the applicant knows what they're doing, that they're going to follow the law. It might be important to ask these again, so, but I hear you, absolutely.
If I can add on to that a little bit, um, if, a really good example would be if a manager for a hotel, um, and restaurant license was here and you asked him the question about, or you asked them the question about, are you onsite or offsite? And they said offsite, but then the owner subs, subs and says onsite, there's a little bit of discrepancy in the understanding of their roles and what their license does. So that might open this particular question into an opportunity for you to dig a little bit deeper about their understanding of how they're running their business. Um, and I do want to just make sure that we all understand, the applicant does not go to a hearing at the state. You are the only hearing, so you are the only questions that will be asked of that applicant. I can ask clarifying questions. I can dig a little bit deeper into the application before I send it to you for the hearing, but you are the authority and you are the only person asking that applicant questions.
Got it. So the packets they submit are not part of the record then?
They are part of the record.
Okay, that's my question.
And I send it to the state, but the state just reviews the application. They don't necessarily reach out to the applicant.
Got it.
Any, any other questions? No, good.
Thank you. I appreciate your time and Ms. Aragorn, um, is looking forward to coming back and kind of providing a little bit of training, of training, um, more focused on your role as the hearing officer.
Perfect, thank you. Um, do you guys want to take a quick little break? You want to jump right into it? Quick break?
Um, the, the agenda speaks states that there's a work session from six to seven P M. and that the regular meeting would be following immediately after. So we are assessed until seven P M.
Seven P M.
Yes, so take a break.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That Deputy Warren B. needed to leave. I don't know if you were.
Oh.
Yeah, he, he got a call, so he needed to leave.
Okay.
So he came up and made his introductions and.
Oh, perfect, perfect. Okay, awesome. Um, seven o'clock, okay. And now call to order, the July twenty second, twenty twenty five Board of Trustees Meeting, time being seven P M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Clerk, make a roll call, please.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Trustee Cannon.
Here.
Trustee Daly. Trustee Moyer. Trustee Teets.
Here.
Mayor Pretend Mason.
Here.
Mayor Shosi.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? Any conflicts of interest to you in this evening? No. All right, now it's time for public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak will be given three minutes. Sign up at the table and state your name for the record. I think there's no public comment. On to the presentation section of this evening. We have, um, the Financial Auditor's Report and Mr. Nick Reddavid, our Finance Director and Treasurer, will present on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Trustees. Thank you for your time tonight. I am Nick Reddavid, Finance Director and Town Treasurer. And tonight I'm honored to share that the Town of Wellington, Colorado's financial statements with Independent Auditors Report for the fiscal year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty three, has been completed as of June twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, and has been accepted by the Office of the State Auditor for Colorado. It is included in the packet for tonight's meeting and has been posted to the Finance Department page of the town's website, as well as the State Auditor's website. Since joining the town as Finance Director in late April of last year and rebuilding the Finance Department following one hundred percent turnover, we've worked diligently with our consultant, Don Rhodes, to catch the town up on the delayed audits from previous years. Excuse me. The audit of financial statements for fiscal year twenty twenty one was initially submitted February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, and subsequently revised June seventh, twenty twenty four by Mayberry and Company LLC. The board then contracted with Hinkle and Company P C for completion of the audits, uh, financial statements for fiscal years twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. The audit, uh, financial statements for fiscal year twenty twenty two was completed and submitted to the Office of the State Auditor on January thirty first, twenty twenty five, following a rigorous onboarding process, internal control review, and testing of financial reporting and record keeping. Upon the completion of the audit of financial statements for fiscal year twenty twenty three by Hinkle and Company, on June twenty sixth, a subsequent acceptance and subsequent acceptance by the State Auditor, I'm happy to share that all delayed revenues from property taxes and Conservation Trust Fund have been authorized for release. The town received a lump sum payment from Larimer County of two point two million dollars in property tax revenue in May, which is reflected in the Treasurer's Report for May twenty twenty five, also included in tonight's meeting packet. Additional dispersments in June and this month bring the year-to-date total to four point five million dollars. The Department of Local Affairs has also confirmed that Conservation Trust Funds of four hundred seventy seven thousand dollars being held since June twenty twenty two will be released in their next round of payments. The most important takeaway from the Independent Auditor's Report of the Financial Statements for Fiscal Year twenty twenty three is that the Town of Wellington's financial statements were presented fairly for their respective financial position of the governmental activities, which are the General Fund, including Administration, Library, and several other departments, as well as the Street Fund and Park Fund, and the Business Type Activities, which are our water, wastewater, and stormwater enterprises, and each major fund. The respective changes in physical, in financial positions and cash flows for the year were represented fairly as well, in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles. A number of highlights are described in the Management's Discussion and Analysis, or M D N A, that follows the Independent Auditor's Report. The M D N A is required by the Government, Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and follows a specific format with required information outlined in the Governmental Accounting, Auditing, and Financial Reporting Blue Book from the Government Finance Officers Association. The M D N A was reviewed by the Independent Auditor prior to publication for completeness and accuracy. The M D N A also helps explain the accrual basis of accounting and economic resources measurement focus found in government-wide financial statements. Modified accrual basis, as found in the Monthly Treasurer's Report, focuses on the current financial resources available. Full accrual basis found in the financial statements tracks economic activity regardless of when the funds are received or paid. To convert modified accrual to full accrual, assets and liabilities that weren't recognized under such, under the former, such as receivables and payables, are added in to the latter and adjusted accordingly in revenues and expenses. This complex and time-consuming process is an important aspect of the Independent Auditor's responsibilities in preparing the town's financial statements. Of note from the Independent Auditor's Report, the M D N A and the financial statements of fiscal year twenty twenty three are that the total net position of the town for all funds on December thirty first, twenty twenty three was one hundred and ten point two million dollars, growing by two point seven million dollars more than the previous year. Net investment in capital was flat at sixty seven point one million dollars, which is nearly sixty one percent of the total net position. Funds restricted for emergencies, streets, and open space and parks are an additional five point one percent of the total net position, totaling five point six million dollars. Over thirty seven point five million dollars, or thirty four percent of the total net position at year end, are unrestricted funds that may be used to meet the town's ongoing obligations. The fund balance for the General Fund grew by two hundred and five thousand dollars to nine point three million, and all governmental funds grew by a total of one million dollars to an overall ending fund balance of seventeen point six million. The enterprise fund's total net position, or fund balance, at year end was seventy four point five million dollars, an increase in net position of two point one million. The Independent Auditor did note a restatement of the water fund's beginning net position, and the sewer fund, as opposed to a loss in twenty twenty two, saw a slight increase in net position in twenty twenty three of twenty three thousand five hundred dollars. Outstanding debt at year end in governmental funds decreased by over a quarter million dollars in regular payments on current obligations with no new debt. As shared in previous presentations and stated again tonight to ensure clarity and consistency, independent auditors only present opinions on the basic financial statements, which are the statement of net position, the statement of activities, the balance sheet, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances and net positions, statement of cash flows, and notes to the financial statements. Required supplementary in, information, while included in the report, utilizes the same audited numbers as the basic financial statements, but no additional opinion is presented on those statements specifically. Given the Independent Auditor's opinion that the financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, and each major fund were presented fairly for fiscal year twenty twenty three, no adjustments to the town's budgeted programs or projects are necessary at this time. Estimated beginning fund balances for the twenty twenty five budget were developed using the ending fund balances from the twenty twenty three financial statements that had not yet been audited and the estimated ending fund balances from twenty twenty four. In preparing for the twenty twenty six budget, ending fund balances from completed audits will be used to provide an updated and sound estimate of the beginning fund balance. Lastly, on tonight's consent agenda is a request to authorize the Town Treasurer to sign an engagement letter with Hinkle and Company for the audit of the financial statements for fiscal year twenty twenty four. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends that governmental entities enter into multi-year agreements of at least five years in duration when obtaining the services of independent auditors. G F O A further states that such agreements allow for greater continuity and help to minimize the potential. and help to minimize the potential for disruption in connection with the independent audit. Multi-year agreements can also help reduce audit costs. Considering the significant amount of time spent by both town staff and Hinkle and Company in onboarding and the successful completion of two audits, it's my opinion that continuing the contract will expedite the process to complete the audit of the financial statement of fiscal year twenty twenty four. This audit will have additional complexity as a single audit is required due to the expenditure of federal ARPA funds for the water treatment plant in twenty twenty four. The engagement letter estimates a fee of twenty nine thousand eight hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty four audit and an additional fee not to exceed six thousand one hundred dollars for the single audit. A formal request for extension of time to file audit, excuse me, a formal request for extension of time to file audit form will be submitted to the State Auditor by the July thirty first deadline to mitigate disruption in revenues paid to the town while the audit is being completed. Thank you again for your time and continued support. I'm happy to take questions at this time.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Wiegand.
I appreciate your thoroughness on this, and it's great being ahead of the game for once, so appreciate your due diligence.
Thank you. Thank you.
Trustee Teets.
I don't have any questions, just a comment. Um, I thoroughly and truly stand by and support your hire to the Town of Wellington. Um, I know that there may have been pushback at the start. Some people were happy, some people weren't, and from day one, I truly, truly felt that your appointment here was going to be extremely beneficial for our town. Um, so I am very grateful that you have been on top of this. I know it has not been easy, and I mean, I've even given you slack on some of the items. Um, but it's not for lack of wanting these things accomplished um for our town. So I'm very grateful that you've hung in there through amidst so much stuff that you've had to go through, and there is a lot. I've seen it all and probably some we've not seen. Um, so I'm grateful, and I will be very excited to see twenty twenty four come to the start and close, but I'm very grateful for your commitment to our town and that the audit is complete, and now we're moving on to twenty twenty four.
Thank you.
Uh, Trustee Cannon.
I'm going to echo um Trustee Teets. Um, and thank all the staff, starting with Patty Garcia, our Town Administrator, for hiring you and um and taking control of our town's finances. You know, there's a lot of residents who still think that 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 Wellington's finances are a mess, but you know, uh, everything that I'm seeing says they're not a mess, that they were a mess, and people like you and Patty and your teams are getting us back under control, and I appreciate that tremendously, Nick. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Ten.
Congratulations. Um, very cool stuff. I, you know, I've uh made the uh uh promise to a lot of our residents that we would be caught up this year as far as our financial audits go, and we're there. And I and I can't be more pleased, especially with the finance staff, our Advisory Board, uh Administrator Garcia, Deputy Administrator Hodling, uh Mr. Reddavid yourself. Um, just an incredible job, and it's really, you know, these highlights from the twenty twenty three statements. I mean, we're we're in a very good position here, and I'm very excited to see what's going to come up uh here next year. So uh congratulations and and thank you again.
Thank you.
I think you know how I feel. Um, we talked about it, but uh you're wonderful. Um, seeing the dedication, everything you do, uh how far you've brought in the Finance Department since you've came on board. Uh, with staff and everybody working together, it's incredible to see where it was when, you know, we, most of us started to where it is now. Um, consistency matters, and we're getting that from you um across the board. So wonderful job, and thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, on to the consent agenda. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for the items on the consent agenda?
July eighth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes, resolution number twenty six dash twenty twenty five, resolution of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, considering a contract for roof replacement services at the water reclamation facility. Consent to authorize the Town Treasurer to sign Hinkle and Company PC engagement letter for the audit of twenty twenty four financial statements.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosi.
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you. On to action items. Uh, Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item F one?
Resolution number twenty seven dash twenty twenty five, a resolution approving the municipal law enforcement services agreement by and between Laramo County, Colorado and the Town of Wellington, Colorado.
Thank you. And then Patty Garcia, the Town Administrator, will present on this.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and Trustees. Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. You have before you tonight a resolution approving an agreement for law enforcement services by Laramo County Sheriff's Office. This agreement is very similar to those approved in previous years through the identification of service levels, responsibilities, and terms. Um, the one change that I noted in the packet and would like to make and speak to is the change from a five-year agreement to one that can be terminated with one by either party um with one hundred, one hundred and eighty days notice. Um, the contract, although we are approving, asking for consideration of the contract tonight, it has a start date of January one, twenty twenty six. The contract speaks to the Sergeant, being the Chief of Police, and Russell Downing is serving in that role for the Town of Wellington. The Town of Berthoud also contracts one hundred percent with L C S O for their law enforcement services. I can tell you that when we go to regional managers' meetings, and I sometimes sit by Chris Kirk, who is the manager in in Berthoud, and the other municipalities talk about the struggles they have with um keeping officers, the cost of of a police department, the insurance that's required for that. Chris and I just kind of laugh, and we think we've got the best deal in the world. So we're, as far as staff, you know, we 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 work with them on a regular basis. We're in communication. In fact, today, we met um Parks and Rec, met with L C S O and Wellington Fire to talk about the vandalism issues that have been happening and things like that. Um, and we do support an ongoing agreement. As a reminder for you, the consideration tonight is for the contract only. The twenty twenty six L C S O budget will be brought to later this fall for review and discussion. Um, but wanted to, uh, we need the the current contract requires us to have another contract in place six months before the expiration. So we're we're kind of missing a deadline a little bit, but wanted to meet that as much as we could. And Sergeant Downing is here to answer any questions or give an update, if you would like, um prior to consideration of this document.
You want, do you want to share anything? You don't have to, if you don't.
Good evening, Mayor Mayor and Trustees. I don't really have a whole lot to share, um except to kind of coattail off what Patty said um regarding the the vandalism issues that we've been having uh speci- specifically over the last month. Um, we've been addressing those with uh with increased patrols, and and we've been discussing and placing uh cameras and some other deterrents and some other ways of uh of figuring out who these suspects are. Uh, we do believe the juveniles and uh, which makes it a little bit tricky in a number of different ways. And part of that is is gathering that intel on who they are. Um, Deputy Warden B, who had to had to bail out, but you met uh this evening. Um, he's gonna, he's our new S R O for the high school and middle school specifically. Um, as it addresses this issue, um, he's uh pretty optimistic that once school gets back in session, the the people are going to start talking, and rumors are going to start flying, and he's going to be able to start developing some more information on who the suspects are of of especially the high-dollar incidents that we've been dealing with. So um, this isn't going to be resolved today or tomorrow, um, but we are we're hopeful that it will be uh taken care of in the next couple of months. Um, and we'll have uh some kids and some parents held accountable for for what's been going on.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on this? Trustee Teets.
Do you have a question? Not on the vandalism. I'm sure you guys will get it handled. My question comes from the request to you transition a five-year contract to the hundred and eighty days can terminate whenever wanted. Is there a reason why that wording is transitioning the way it is?
I can't really speak to that. I wasn't part of that decision. Do you have more information on that?
It it was to keep things consistent. They had started using that format with the Town of Tinmouth and also with the Town of Berthoud, and just trying to keep all of the contracts consistent. Um, you know, bringing things back every five years wasn't serving a great purpose. Um, who's going to remember it? We're having to put it on schedules and things like that. Keeping it to the hundred and eighty days is typical of other agreements and contracts um for as far as the termination clause, so it just made sense. That that's what I've understood.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That was my only question.
Thanks. Trustee Wiegand.
No questions. I just appreciate what you do and the expertise that you guys got, and the the training is phenomenal. And uh, we'd probably love to have the tour of your facilities uh down in Fort Collins sometime again, like we normally do, so try to put that on the agenda. Thank you.
Sure, we can coordinate that. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Cannon. And Member Ten.
Sergeant Downing, appreciate uh all the tough work out there. I I know, uh, I'm I'm sure you guys will get the vandalism stuff tracked down, so I really appreciate all the hard work on that. Uh, please do not cancel our contract in a hundred and eighty days. Please don't do that. Uh, but other other than that, uh, just please tell the the rest of the guys, uh, keep up the good work and uh appreciate uh all of the everything you do for the community, so.
Will do. Thank you, sir. Yeah, I appreciate all you guys do. Um, we dealt with you last week. Uh, very quick response time, very uh oriented with the community, very person-based. I really liked uh how the approach was and how when they got in touch with me. Um, that was that was wonderful, really good police work there. So keep up that culture. Um, thank you for that. Um, I don't have any questions other than that, so thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, may I make one clarification on the contract? Um, the hundred and eighty day provision that was in there, I I delayed a little bit because I wanted to go check the old old contract language. It's exactly the same as it was before. It can be terminated within a hundred and eighty days notice. The difference now is the old contract said it was from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five. This one just says the contract exists indefinitely unless it's terminated. So that hundred day delay, a hundred and eighty day language was already in there. Um, this actually just. It's 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 actually almost a longer-term contract, so.
Thank you, and that is correct, and I remember that now. It's it used to be, yeah, the date, the time span was like twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five. So that's now it's just open-ended.
Yeah.
Thankfully.
Thank you. Uh, do I hear a motion on this item? Oh, yeah. Uh, now it's time, well. Okay. Are there any uh public comment on the side? No, no public comment. All right, now, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve Resolution number twenty seven dash twenty twenty five of resolution approving the municipal law enforcement services agreement by and between Laramo County, Colorado and the Town of Wellington, Colorado.
I second.
Perfect. Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosi.
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all. Thank you, you guys.
On to the next item. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item F two?
Boys and Girls Club of Laramo County, follow-up to funding request.
Perfect. And then Ms. Garcia, Town Administrator, will present on the side.
Thank you, Mayor and Trustees. Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. So at your last meeting on July eighth, you received a presentation and a funding request from the Boys and Girls Club of Laramo County for five thousand dollars to fund their Wellington Summer of Discovery program. This funding comes from the Board Discretionary Fund, which has an adopted budget of thirty thousand dollars for twenty twenty five. The board approved the five thousand dollar request, but as you may remember, Darren Roberson noted the total funding gap of ten thousand two hundred and thirty eight dollars for the program and requested the board increase the amount of the grant from the Board of, from the Board Discretionary Fund from five thousand to ten thousand dollars, and stated he would provide a match for that amount. So I'm looking for direction on how to proceed. There are several options, including but not limited to keeping the funding to the five thousand dollars that was requested and approved. You can increase the funding by two hundred and thirty eight dollars if you'd like and request Mr. Roberson to match the five thousand dollars that the Board of Trustees has already approved. Or you can increase the funding for a total of ten thousand dollars, which would provide the total to of twenty thousand dollars to the program with a match from Mr. Roberson. Um, we do not have any representatives from Laramo County, um, Boys and Girls Club, but um it's open for discussion um and looking for some direction.
Perfect. Going for a direction here. Trustee Wiegand.
I would say we need to go for it, and I need, we need to invest in our kids, especially with what's happening with the vandalism and everything else in this town. You know, this gives the al- alternate uh stuff for the kids to do, and I think it's extremely important. So I'm for increasing it by that five thousand.
Thank you. Trustee Teets.
Thank you. Um, so we had received an email noting that there may be additional funds needed elsewhere related to some of our hug grants and oh, keeping the possibility of opening up additional applications or people that might apply. Um, I'm comfortable to move forward with the two hundred and thirty eight from the Board Discretionary Fund with a request to Darren Roberson from Sage Homes to match it. I would like to hold off if we can and encourage them towards the end of the year. If they would like to come back, if we have those funds, to apply for more. Um, but I would really like to see some of those funds go towards our senior center or go towards the hug grant that may possibly be needing that as we head into August, which is our hottest month. So people will be watering, and I have a feeling some of those resources are going to be needed. So I would support the two hundred and thirty eight to provide that ten thousand two thirty eight with that match. Um, but I wouldn't support the additional five thousand at this time.
Perfect. Thank you. Trustee Cannon.
Well, I agree with Trustee Teets. Um, you know, but there are going to be additional requests coming in, and I know our senior center uh is another great need, and the hug grants have been well-received in town, uh, but the funding is can be limited on that. You know, sometimes it's hard to to say no when when someone like Darren comes up and says, hey, increase it, you know, double the amount of money that we're asking for, and I'll and I'll match that, you know. It plays to your motions to some degree, but we've got a bigger picture that we need to look at. So I would also be receptive to increasing uh by an additional two hundred and thirty eight dollars.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, yeah, I do agree with my colleagues, Trustee Teets and Trustee Cannon on this. I I I do know that, you know, the uh discretionary funds getting uh uh uh, or I should not the discretionary, the hardship utility grant funding is getting a little low. I would like to see us uh get a little more money in that. Uh, obviously, people are going to be, uh, we we're not to the end of the summertime yet, and folks are still still irrigating. So uh, I do suspect we'll, we're going to have more applications for that. I also do understand that there's going to be other entities that do apply for some of these funds. So I I would recommend that we uh do go ahead and increase it by the additional two thirty eight. Uh, I would ask that the Boys and Girls Club, if again, you know, uh, month, two, three down the road, if they'd like to reapply, assuming they need additional funding at that point, uh, certainly, I think this board's uh willing to uh entertain that at that time. But I would uh recommend the additional two thirty eight uh at this time.
Thank you, sir. Um, my heart's with Trustee Wiegand, right? Um, my head is is with with you guys in in the two thirty eight additional. Um, just because of the hug grant and and all of that. I mean, we got to be careful of the funds. Um, so, yeah, I I I'm supportive of the two thirty eight and then a request to Mr. Darren um to do a do a match of the five thousand.
Can I give an update on the hug information? So I had sent an email um to the board on July fifteenth um that talked about the hug program and the amount that was going to be needed for the rest of the year. I also noted that we had proposed a transfer of funds from the I T wages and salaries fund because there was a mid-year hire to continue to fund the hug grant. So I just wanted to remind you all of that. I didn't want you to think that we were gonna going to need to take money from the Board Discretionary Fund this year. We wanted it, the Board Discretionary Fund, the way you all had set it up, that it was purely for programming um for nonprofits. So the hug grant is not a nonprofit and not necessarily like a program. Um, it's just grants or funding out to um residents. So we are trying, trying to provide to you just options related to the Board Discretionary Fund as as a program and meet the requirements of the of it needing to be going to a nonprofit.
Hmm, okay.
So um, we have, we we did find funding um to meet the number of hug grants that we provided last year um in that I T fund, so wanted to give you that update as a reminder.
Don't change anybody's stance. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's fair. So if I could. That's fair. So if I could have a motion, please.
Yeah.
That would be helpful. Oh, sorry, public comment.
Member of the public wishing to speak, now is your time. You'll be given three minutes. No public comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, yeah, may I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve an additional $238 from the Board Discretionary Fund with a request to Darren Roberson at Sage Homes to match 5,000 for a total of $10,238, which is the funding gap identified in the application.
I second.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Wigan.
I will go with the majority, yes.
Trustee Teetz.
Yes.
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will communicate to Boys and Girls Club of Laramore County of your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. On to reports. Mr. Dan Zappienza.
No report at this time.
Thank you, sir. A moment. All right, on to the town administrator, Ms. Garcia.
Thank you. So as you may remember, we will be conducting our boardroom AV installation starting next week. We'll be adding a logo to the front of the dais, so we'll be removing that brown piece of equipment, brown, whatever that is, storage, covering up the hole in front of the dais. So that'll be removed. We'll be removing the whiteboard behind you. We will be moving the quilt to the senior center side, really a better location for it. We'll be doing some painting. I'll send out an email when we plan to do that in case anybody wants to come and start rolling or spraying or cutting in those corners, all those things. So we'll be, we're going to take this opportunity to spruce this up and help it be, help it feel more judicial. So there's that legislation. There's a lot of legislation related to the town that goes into effect in 2025. So initially, items will be set up as presentations to the Board of Trustees with adoption at later dates, such as the housing affordability requirements and funding opportunities. There's a lot of pieces that have to come into play before we can opt into what we call Prop 123. So wanted to let you know the next couple agendas are going to be full, including budget information. So there's a lot happening. We'll try to get that information to you as quickly as we can with clear information about the legislation that we're looking to implement. Some of it is we don't have, some of the legislation is required. We don't have a choice. We have to implement it. There's others that are a choice, such as the Prop 123 items, which is help for affordable housing or attainable housing. So I wanted to let you know, give you an update, and we'll just keep plugging through. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff communications were in the packet. Any board reports? Trustee Wigan? No. Trustee Teetz?
No.
Trustee Cannon? Mayor Proton?
No report.
Wow, okay.
We do have Zach back.
Do you like to hear from Jeff?
Oh, yes, yes, yeah, now he's back.
Sorry to call you here. Come on, I was waiting, right? Thank you.
It is a good five minutes later.
I know. And I wait out in my car.
Well, Sergeant Downing. The vandalism and all that, I'm hoping that once school starts, kids will start talking. It's usually with this stuff, they like to take credit for their work. So they'll start posting it. With that being said, I'm not sure who's listening in virtual land, but if you see something on your kid's TikTok, whatever, obviously, call us. Any leads that we can get will help, just because it was kind of a big hit to the town. As far as this summer, me working in Wellington and all that, I've been kind of focusing on more of the juvenile contacts. Just explaining to them, I mean, whether it's true or not, but I've been telling them like, hey, the town doesn't have to have these parks open. They do it to benefit you, and the kids that keep damaging them are going to be the reason these parks close, because I don't know how long the town can afford to replace a $20,000 slide. So the message is getting out there. Just a couple of things that I have on kind of my plan for the first, I would say, first quarter of the school year is, one thing that we're working on is doing kind of a open house, probably at the middle school of kids, parents, all that, but like a social media safety, just a discussion about it. Just because that's a big issue. I know the bullying that goes on, stuff like that. But, and then kids doing things they're not supposed to on social media and just using it safely. There's a lot of bad people out there that target kids, and they do it on social media. So I know I've talked to the principal at Rice, still working with the administration at the Wellington Middle High School, and then I Stone on creating a time and a date to do kind of a big open house for all the schools at the high school, just because that's the biggest venue. Whether parents and kids want to come, that way they can be educated on social media. One thing I did, I took what we call Open Source Investigations Class, is a two-day social media investigation to where, just a brief example, they put a, like a six-second YouTube clip of this guy, and we were just through social media to find out the location, the name, and the car type. And it's almost scary, the amount of information the internet has. So I like to think I've become well-rounded in social media investigations, which I feel like a lot of the issues we have at our schools is on social media, among other things. And I've already kind of formed that relationship with the middle high school. Yes, there is a contract in place where there are things that are not necessarily a law enforcement matter, but just because it's not a law enforcement matter doesn't mean I can't help in certain aspects. Because at the end of the day, an SRO's job is to build relationships, not only with staff, but also kids and their parents, and kind of be in that mentor. So that's kind of my goal, and I just encourage everybody to reach out to me. You know, I always tell the kids to stop by the office, say hi. I may or may not have candy, whatever. And I just don't want that, as parents, to say like, think I'm just talking to your kids because I'm trying to get information out of them. It's, at the end of the day, it's about mentoring and providing that positive role model, especially if they don't have it at home. So that's a little bit about me. I'm sure it's a three-year commitment, so I'll be there for at least the next three years, but my plan is to be there for the long haul as long as nothing else changes. So thanks for letting me talk, and we'll be seeing you guys around.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I don't have anything as a board report either. Like you guys, enjoy you, love you guys. It's fun to work together. Just keep doing it, you know? Having no further business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Awesome. I now adjourn the regular meeting. Time being 7:37 PM.